I'd like to call the April 25th, 2019 Pickle City School Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. Mr. Hiddle, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay, you've had an opportunity to approve, to review the minutes from the March 20th Regular Meeting and the April 1st Special Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, are there any additions or corrections need to be made to those minutes? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we have a celebration, Mr. Hiddle, or Mr. Hiddle. Mr. Thompson, do you want to?
We do, yes. I would like to call Ron Diver and Linda Jordan from the Southwest Region Ohio School Boards Association to the microphone to present the board with an award.
Does this work?
Yep.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. I know you weren't able to come to our spring conference, but this was a special occasion for us, and we wanted to make sure you got recognized for it. About 12 years ago, our Region Executive Committee was reviewing awards and things like that, and we found out we were having awards for superintendents and treasurers and students and administrators and everybody across, but we weren't providing any kind of recognition for the entire board that does a good job. And so we started what we call the Effective School Board Award. And we devised an A to Z checklist that every board can, if they choose, can go down the list and see if they're doing the things that they ought to be doing. And so we started with a few schools that decided, well, yeah, we'll try it. It was a self, basically a self-evaluation. And we got a few, and this year, I'm proud to say that we had 40, I mean, 40 school districts out of 157 that are part of the Southwest Region. And it's especially important for you to know that back 11 years ago, which was the first time that a board submitted their application or nomination for being an Effective School Board, you came up and came up with a gold. And tonight, we have two awards. I guess we ought to have Andy over here. So the first year, you had 2008, 2009, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. And the award that was given out in the spring is for last year, which was the 2018. And out of 11 years, you have got 11 years as gold. And so I'm going to let you have this between tonight with, tonight, I forgot to tell, introduce you. Linda Jordan is the President of Southwest Region. She's from Clark County Educational Service Center, and I begged her to come along with me tonight and see your beautiful facility.
Wow.
So, I mean, I, not, I won't be allowed to let any other school board come here and visit your. They'll, they'll want to spend some money. And I know you didn't spend much money, and they're going to want to know how in the world you got by with all this for such little money. So anyhow, that is the normal award. However, for five years or 10 years, we give a special award. And this is 10-plus Gold Award Years in the Effective School Board, Pickle City, Southwest Region, OSBA 2019. I'll let you hand that to Mr. Andy.
Can you manage them all?
We'll manage.
That's beautiful. I love that one.
Very nice. Thank you.
It's a, it's a, it's a board award, but let me tell you, it takes the administration, the superintendent, the treasurer, and the whole team to accomplish this. Get up here, Frank.
Shove her out.
No.
Here, hold that one.
Get over here, Linda. Oh, you're going to take it.
I'm a bit of a short guy.
Linda's picture taker. We have, I've drug her, the Southwest Region is in 17 counties, and I've drug her all over the springtime, and we've been everywhere. And this is certainly the royalty of it all.
Frank.
Thank you.
You're here.
Yeah.
Ross, thanks.
Mr. Lee, uh, yeah.
We had a great meeting, we're going to, we're going to leave and head back home. You've got the Clark County, and I've got to go down to Orange County, so have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Here is a program from the, from the spring conference, and it's got your own name in there. It says, there's 157 school districts in the region, and 40 of them qualify this year for the Effective School Board, so.
Not all gold, the way you just did.
No, almost, almost all of them were gold. Some of them don't apply, I think, because they don't feel like they might qualify for gold, but what we have.
The only thing was that they got the 10 years.
Yeah, there's only, only half a dozen has the 10 years. So it's a, we think it's quite an honor for you guys to qualify for it, so. If you have a great meeting, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was going to take another tour.
Okay, moving along. Mr. Patrizio, do you have a legislative report tonight?
The big issue in the legislation right now is the budget. There's two factions going currently, and nothing has been passed.
Imagine that. Okay, thank you. Upper Valley Career Center Report. We met this past Monday, and one of the new programs has been started at the Career Center is a, we have a career assessment specialist, a job bank, and what we've created is a way for employers and potential employees to interact with each other to find employment through the programs that they've qualified for in the Career Center. And they update it every month, so new jobs keep coming up, and it's a great, great opportunity. And if you happen to see the newspaper and on Facebook, we recently had the Skills USA State Conference, and it was sort of the Upper Valley highlight reels. We run, won all sorts of awards for that. We've got one national officer candidate. Our chapter is one of 24 that's up for national award. We had, the student awards, we had 11 gold, three silver, and five bronze. And we also received the Gold Award for the Instructor of the Year. So the Career Center did very well at Skills USA, and you'll hear more about Skills USA here very shortly. So that'd be my report from the Career Center. And I have nothing on hearing to the public on agenda items. Treasurers' Report. Mr. Hiddle?
Good evening. Are there any questions about the financial reports that were attached? We're right on target, should be at 75%, and everything is right in line as far as budget, projected budgets. And there's nothing too exciting to report on that front. The other thing that's on here tonight is the board approval of student health insurance for parents that want to provide additional coverage, especially if they have students who are playing sports, athletics, any of the extracurriculars, as well as their special football coverage and protection for those kids who are involved in that. I'm recommending that we make a switch to a new company. It's covered by Mutual of Omaha Insurance Company. They provide a better coverage for a less price for the parents, and I think that it makes sense to make a switch to something that's a little bit more cost-effective and should provide a little bit better coverage to those students. Those are the only two things I have tonight.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hiddle? If not, can we have a motion to accept the treasurer's agenda?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda's carried. Mr. Thompson, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I would like to call up Pauline Hicks and Jason Hawkes from the JV, or JVS, how do I still say that, Upper Valley Career Center. Unless you've lived in a cave this year, you most likely have seen Pauline in the news, so we're excited to have her come to our board meeting and talk to you about some of the great things that she's done this year in her competition in the National Skills USA.
First of all, I'm Jason Hawke, I'm the Assistant Superintendent at Upper Valley Career Center, and we just thought it was a very appropriate time to come in and talk about some of the things that are going on in Pickle City Schools that relate to career and technical education. Pickle City Schools has kind of been ahead of the curve here from a lot of districts as far as promoting career education for students with some of the success-bound initiatives that they put in, the emphasis on workforce. So that's been a great partnership, and we've really enjoyed that opportunity. We're getting asked from a lot of schools, but Pickle's made a different level of commitment than a lot of the districts that we work with, so we're excited about that opportunity. As we've talked about with this board, or I'm sure you've heard, is some of the expansion of those program offerings next year, one of those being in the manufacturing sector and also the other one being in the medical field. And some of those programs, as we continue to develop that, we're starting with a controllable size with a couple of classes, and we're going to continue to expand that programming. We have five teachers currently at the Career Center, or from the Career Center in Pickle City Schools, and we're looking to expand that number a little bit. But with that comes an opportunity for Skills USA involvement. All career technical programs are required by state law to have a CTSO, Career Technical Student Organization, associated with them. The two that would come with the programs that you have right now from manufacturing, engineering, and medical is Skills USA, and that's the program that Ula is involved. Ula's a, obviously a Pickle City School student that attends the Career Center and is a national officer and has a very unique story. But along with the programming, the opportunities for students, the skills, or the CTSO, Skills USA in this chapter, is, is really the opportunity for students to demonstrate their leadership and to get involved more in their communities and be able to shine and show off some of the skills that they learn in class. I'm going to turn it over to her.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ula Hicks, and my story began when I moved to America at the age of 14 with my two sisters and I. Being that, that young, at that young age, moving to America was a huge culture shock. It was a totally different world, and how we adapted to the environment was that when we went to Pickle High School, we took as many classes that we could, and after a while, I saw that I was destined for more. So hearing about the Medical Careers Academy Program at Upper Valley, I was like, okay, why not give it a shot? So a few weeks going to Upper Valley, I saw the opening and closing ceremony at the Hartzell Lecture Hall, and there were Skills USA local officers in red blazers like this, and they were saying all these different words, and I was like, okay, I want to have that passion that they have. So I decided to join Skills USA, and so far, running for three offices and competing in two local competitions, I realized my potential in CTE and Skills USA. And that was that advocating for CTE, something that I hold dear to my heart, and also my program that has taught me different skills, such as basic health skills, CPR, and also through my medical program at Upper Valley, I was able to get my STNA, which is the State Tested Nursing Assistant Certificate. And through that, I was able to get a job at a rheumatologist office in Troy, and also I have been able to work towards my certification as a medical assistant. So throughout the many opportunities that I've had as a national officer, which was to advocate at Capitol Hill, I have grown as a person, and also in my personal life and in the academic life, I've grown as a person, and I'm thankful for CTE and Skills USA. Thank you for having me here.
When she brings her own film crew, that's, that's a little special. Ula is up, she is a national finalist for the Presidential Scholar for the state of Ohio. She's, she's been recognized there and has, has moved on to that national level and is in that semifinalists, and so we're really anxious about next month because, again, with, with that passion and that story, we think she's a very strong candidate for that and ambassador for Pickle City Schools and also Upper Valley Career Center. So thank you for allowing us to come in.
Thank you.
Ula, do you have some support here? Do you have some people you want to introduce us to?
Yes. Everyone, that is my mom, Alicia Hicks, and she's here with me.
Any questions about the program or the opportunity for Skills USA? Right now, you have FCCLA is one of the programs that you do have as a Career Technical Student Organization at Pickle City Schools at the high school level. But again, Skills USA is another option that we can look at adding as we continue to move this program forward. Any questions about the program or Skills USA?
I just wonder what you do in your spare time?
I work. I like working.
That, that's been one of the great things with her, again, very humbled within, within the job that she has, for, for the Career Center students to be able to hire high school students at Premier Medical Health. That was a, that was a big step for the hospital, and then once they, they see the caliber of the students and the training that they've received, that program, we have seven students at Premier right now. So again, that's part of that community partnerships that continue to grow out of career tech programs. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we, we again have our monthly update by a building this week, month, rather. It is Jeff Clark from the Pickle Junior High School who will be providing us with an update on their academic achievement.
Good evening. It's really not fair every month we get scheduled after these amazing stories of students and people doing amazing things, so congratulations to, to all the awesome things going on. I, I got to figure out how to get my own film crew. I don't know how that works. Mr. Hawke, you heard Mr. Hawke mention success bound, and I did not pay him to do that. It just, it really works out well that that's what I'm speaking about tonight, what we've done at Pickle Junior High School to start to go down that road of talking about what does it look like to be success bound at the junior high level. Pickle High School, I put a picture in my slideshow of what the high school has in place in the main office this year and what it looks like there and what that means for us. So I wanted to walk you through what our process has been this year, talked with Dwayne toward the end of last year about rolling success bound down to our level. So this year, we've spent a lot of time going through what that's going to look like for us, starting next year, what we're already doing, what we can do to enhance it. Met early with the Pickle High School staff, with Rob and with Lindsey Mollencamp at Pickle High School, to talk about what it is Pickle High School expects from Pickle Junior High School students when they leave us. What do we need to do to get our students ready to be successful at Pickle High School so they can then do things like we just saw? So we want to make sure we're doing our part to get those students ready. This school year, we had monthly meetings with the high school staff, again, with Rob, with Lindsey Mollencamp. Dwayne was there for the meetings each month and also Mr. Bloom, and talking about what it is we could contribute to that process. My building leadership team was the next step, met with them to talk about what their role is in helping students get to that point of being success bound and ready for the next step at Pickle High School, and then also meeting with my student leadership students, and, and I'll reference them again later. They brought some really, really insightful input to the process, and I'll share that with you here in a little bit. And we'll walk you through kind of what it's going to look like for us. If you notice, if you've seen the display at Pickle High School, it talks about four different areas, four different areas with criteria. It talks about academics, academic requirements, testing requirements, success requirements, and career requirements. So we wanted to mirror that process. So for us, what did it look like at the junior high level? In seventh grade and eighth grade, looked similar. There are some, there are some nuances that will be a little different, but just in core academics, we talked about really setting the bar high, not just saying we want students to come in and participate in our classes or even just pass our classes. We want to set the bar at, we want our students to have a C average or better in all their academic courses, so all the courses we offer at each level. You see STEM on there, we have a STEM 1 class in seventh grade, a STEM 2 class in eighth grade. That's our partnership with the Career Center, Jason mentioned that. So we have that, that connection already happening at the seventh grade level with our STEM classes. This thing will go. There we go. Testing requirements, we have the basic testing requirements that we have through the state. Our seventh graders have to take grade level assessments in seventh grade in English Language Arts and Math. We, again, wanted to set the bar at a certain level, 700 or above, that translates to being proficient or better in both of those tested areas. Career requirements. Earlier this year, I presented to you the manufacturing visit that we did this year. We went and visited several local manufacturing sites. We are on a two-year rotation at Pickle Junior High School with getting our kids either out to, to see the manufacturing sites, or we host an in-house career day. Mrs. Riley, our guidance counselor, puts that together. So in seventh grade, depending on the year kids come in, they'll see one of those things in seventh grade, and they'll, they'll experience the other thing in eighth grade. We do a two-year college visit every year in seventh grade, our students next week, our seventh graders are going to Edison for, for a full day. Each seventh grader will spend a full day at Edison. Also, we did a Career Center visit earlier this year, start to get them, them to think about the programs that the Career Center has to offer. Also, we utilize the Ohio Means Jobs website to start to work kids through a career cluster so they can start to see where their strengths are, where their interests are. Success requirements. Attendance is a huge thing, and really trying to start to set that bar really high with our students, that we really have to have really, really excellent attendance to be successful in not just school, but as they move forward in their careers. So we're going to set that expectation at 96% attendance. I will tell you, as we talked with the students about that level, they were on board with that. I don't think they really knew what that meant in terms of number of days as we walked through, and it was pretty eye-opening for them, so that was fun. Life skills, we have, we have a group that comes in and works with our students on a monthly basis to go through a life skills program, it's through the Miami County Recovery Council. They come in and, and it really is a very broad program, and our students experience that in seventh and eighth grade, you'll see that again. We need to develop digital literacy beyond what we have right now. We're not where we want to be with that. But really talking to kids about their digital, I guess, footprint and what it looks like. Just had a conversation with a student today about what in five or six years from now when they're applying for scholarships, when they're applying for jobs, what they, what, what footprint, what they want people to see when they're at that level. So really trying to get kids to think about it at our level, also trying to introduce them to the basics of financial literacy. This one was the one that the kids brought to me. When I, when I started to meet with our building leadership, or our student leadership kids, I, I talked to them on a Monday, and I said, I'm going to bring you in on Friday, I'm going to buy you lunch, we bought them pizza, that always gets them motivated. And I said, I want you to think about this one question this week, and we'll talk about it on Friday. What does it mean to be a successful student at Pickle Junior High School? We call it success bound. What does it mean to be successful? And what was really cool, the vast majority of the students, the first thing they brought up when they thought about being successful in school was being involved, being involved in something with the school, being a part of something, being a part of a team, being a part of a club. It wasn't academics necessarily, it wasn't testing, it was getting involved and working with other kids. So I thought that was really cool. We did not have extracurricular involvement through our process with our staff and talking with the high school, that wasn't a part of what we had. We added that after conversations with kids, so I thought that was really neat. The success plan, the high school guidance counselors started this concept, really trying to, we build all this, and we're going to communicate this with kids, how do we monitor it, how do we track it? So what we're going to do is work to devise a success plan, kind of a checklist of are you meeting those requirements, are you meeting those expectations? And if not, what can we do to get you there? So that's, that came out of conversations with the guidance people at the high school and with our guidance counselor. Eighth grade looks very similar with academics, just, just our eighth grade courses instead of seventh grade. Add the science assessment in eighth grade. And then we do a four-year visit, a four-year college visit. In the eighth grade, our students this year went to Wright State. We've done Wright State the last two years. We kind of work on a year-to-year basis to see who can, who's willing to have 250 eighth graders come to their campus. So Wright State's been good the last two years. Three years ago, we went to Urbana, so we'll continue to do that, and also continuing that work with the Ohio Means Jobs career cluster, and again, those same expectations with success. So really just trying to build those expectations and saying, these are the things it takes to be ready to do what you need to do at the high school level, so then you can go do those really cool things beyond, whether it be college, going into the, to the military, or into careers. Questions?
So this criteria is being implemented, it's just new, or it has been?
This is just new. So we'll roll this out next year to students.
Okay.
Actually, we'll start the conversation on May 9th. Our, the sixth graders are going to come out during the day, and then that night, we have our parent orienta, or our sixth grade orientation, so we're going to share this with, with them at that point.
Looks like a very well-thought-out plan. It's neat that the kids came up with some important parts of it.
Absolutely. And again, just to get them thinking about things maybe they weren't even thinking about, and to, obviously, they brought things that we weren't thinking about. It was a lot of fun.
I can see the digital literacy, you know, they don't realize what stays with them forever.
Yeah, and it's, they're getting involved in that so early, even before us, and we've talked about this. Part of the process this year has also been talking with Josh and his folks about how this will translate even to the intermediate level, and how, how much, how much of that is happening before they even get to us. It really is kind of mind-blowing and a little bit scary sometimes. Other questions?
Thank you.
I'm going to head to the junior high musical. If you guys get done in time, good seats still available.
As Mr. Clark indicated, we've also worked with Pickle Central Intermediate, so they just about got their planning done, and we are in the process now with a primary building, so it has trickled its way all the way down, and we should have that full continuum from K-12, so we're excited about that. Next, it says Mrs. Gerhart is going to give an update on kindergarten. She's not here because they're at the kindergarten registration that's taking place now, so she left me with some information just to update you. This is our fourth kindergarten screening this evening. So far, we have 194 students, and she says that's up significantly from years in the past. I don't know where we were last year at this time, but she indicated that's a lot more students than we've had. We do a lot of advertising, and I think we get a lot of, a better return on getting more people in for the registrations that we've had the last couple of years. Our next registration will be Tuesday, June 4th. That's going to be for both Washington and Spring Creek. It's going to start at 8:30. If you want an appointment, you can call either one of those schools, and the schools will set the parent up with an appointment. If the child is going to be five on or before August 1st, and they live in Pickle City Schools. So I wanted to get that information out. Next, I received a phone call from a parent this last week, Kristy Miller. She and her daughter Dylan would like to come forward and talk a little bit about something great that happened in her classroom, so I thought this was a good opportunity for them to share with the board what, what happened.
But I think everything that will be said will be much better heard and appreciated when it comes from my daughter.
I'm not tall enough to reach the microphone, so.
I'm not tall enough to reach the microphone, so... Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Dylan Weatherly, and today I'll be sharing with all of you a few reasons why one of my teachers, Ms. Johns, is so special. So since the very beginning of the year, I realized that Ms. Johns wasn't any ordinary teacher and that she was just beyond words amazing. And one day, I asked her something so little, and she took it, and she made it just such a big deal. So in September of 2018, my mom went on Honor Flight, an airplane ride that takes the veterans to Washington, DC, where they can go there and they can visit all the memorials there for them. And my mom asked me to write a few letters and cards to be passed out to the veterans on Honor Flight, and I asked my mom if perhaps I could ask one of my teachers at school to make a few letters and cards, like just have our class do that. So I went to school the next day, and I asked Ms. Johns if she could just have our class do a short little card-making type session, and she said, of course. And turns out that she was already one step ahead of me because she didn't only have our class write letters and cards, she had Ms. Kopics' class, Mr. Schimmel's class in her, and her homeroom class write cards and letters for the veterans. And that didn't only make an impact on my life, but it also made an impact on all of the veterans' life. So she took something so small and, again, made it so meaningful. Ever since I was little, my mom told me that I need to not only have a kind heart, but I need to get a good education. And ever since beginning of the school year, Ms. Johns took both of those things and put them into her classroom, so anyone that steps foot in her classroom will feel her kind heart and a good education. So I, well, my mom and I both felt the need to tell Mr. Thompson and Mr. Kaufman about Ms. Johns and how amazing she is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can see two of the examples of what's best about Pickle City Schools right here tonight, so thank you so very much.
Great job. Great, great, great job. And you're welcome to leave. Unless you want to stay. Next, just wanted to show really quick, we went out last week, Mr. Height and I, and recognized the building-wide outstanding educators as well as the support staff, outstanding support staff for each building, and these are now all candidates for the district educator or teacher of the year as well as support staff member of the year, and that will be announced the week of May 6th, which is Staff Appreciation Week. So at the high school, you can see Mrs. Downs, and the support staff was Mrs. Schneider, who's the guidance counselor secretary. At the junior high school, Mr. Josh Smith, who's an eighth-grade social studies teacher, was the outstanding educator as voted by that staff, and the support staff member was Mr. Paul Doak, who was the custodian. And then Veronica Guyer is the sixth-grade science teacher at Pickle Central Intermediate for Outstanding Educator, and we have Mr. Foster, Mr. Scott Foster, who is our custodian for support staff member. Ms. Teresa Arp, who is a second-grade teacher at Washington, is the outstanding educator for the year, and support staff is custodian, Mrs. Chris Seitz. For Spring Creek, we have Mrs. Wesbecker, Alyssa Wesbecker, and for the support staff, we have Mr. Kruchshank. And finally, for the Board of Education, is our technology IT, Mr. Robert Allen. So we're excited about all of those. Again, those are all people that were recognized by their peers and voted by them, so they are currently filling out more applications and submitting those to a committee of people that will review that, as well as all the votes and the comments that have been submitted, and that will make a final determination by that committee that, again, will be announced Monday, I believe it's May 6th. So we're excited about that.
So within the school district, there's a committee that chooses?
Yes, and it's all former teacher of the years. So it just, the committee gets as big as it can until those people start retiring, but it has representation from every single building on there, although each building gets one vote. So if, for example, there are three teachers from the high school on that committee, they have to work together to come up with one vote based on all the information provided, and they get to submit one vote.
So once they retire?
They're done.
Okay.
Yep. It's a good committee. It's really, it's a good committee to sit on and to watch them think, and there's a lot of good information that comes in because their peers who work with them day in and day out are providing you with all of this information and tidbits about what they do, so you get a real good insight of the work that they're doing. A lot of fun.
It was interesting today. We went around, everybody wondered what in the world we were doing walking in the rooms. They were all completely caught by surprise.
Yeah, it's real fun. So we'll reveal that soon. We'll be looking forward to that. Last thing I have is just the levy seems, the campaign seems to be going really well. We've had just a few questions that have come our way. I feel like we've been able to answer those very well. We've done some presentations at some of the local service clubs, as well as we've been to the YMCA and met with a group of senior citizens, and those went really well. So continue to encourage people to be the most informed voters that they can, so if they have questions, reach out to us, and we'll help in any way. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Okay. I'm going to go along with the superintendent's agenda.
Yes. I'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations. There's a number of them there. Midwest Mobility donated student activities, AM Leonard, PoliSource, Pickle Steel, and Unity Bank to the Purple Out that we hosted earlier in the year, Kroger, and the Music Boosters to the Pickle High School Band. Recommend board approval of the attached resolution authorizing membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2019-2020 school year. Recommend board approval of the secondary summer school program to be held at the Pickle High School from June 3rd, 2019 through July 26th, 2018. Recommend board approval of the third-grade reading intervention summer school on a daily basis from June 20th, 2018 through July 12th, 2018 at the primary buildings. Recommend board approval of primaries summer school for two days per week for the weeks of June 10th, 2019 through August 2nd, 2019 at the primary buildings. And I will see if I can read these names properly here. Recommend board approval of the enrollment of Samuel Tain Beo Vu of Nuenberg Baden-Württemberg, Germany, at Pickle High School for 2019-2020 school year as a foreign exchange student through AIFS Foundation Academic Year in America, and recommend the board approval of the enrollment of Alba Fadiola Garcia of Zaragora, Spain, at Pickle High School for the 2019-2020 school year as a foreign exchange student through ASSE International Student Exchange Programs.
Good everyone.
I hope they're right, so that's it.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Thompson. If not, can we have a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved.
Thank you.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Just a couple of quick things. Number seven there, Jocelyn Heaston will be moving to the junior high. She's an internal candidate from PCIS. And then nine and 10, just to point out, those are both as needed. So if we have 10 teachers that are asking to work those things, we're only going to use the number of people based on the kids that are coming in, screening and summer school. So, and we'll go through that process once we get summer school up and running with the primary buildings. So outside of that...
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lyons? If not, do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. Now, old business, we have no old business. New business. Mr. Thompson, you want to read those, or do you want to?
Do you want me to read those?
It's, that's fine.
Okay. For new business, recommend board approval of the attached bid for summer work that will take place at Spring Creek, Washington, and Pickle Central Intermediate. Recommend board approval of the attached bid for the summer work at Spring Creek, Washington, and Pickle Central Intermediate.
So number two, so number two has been a little updated. It saved and actually copied what was in number one, and I had saved it, but it didn't pop up, but it's saved now. That was a few hours ago, probably before that was printed off. Number two says project work at Pickle High School roof replacement. So we did get the bid in to finish up the roof project, and that came in just shy of a half a million dollars, so that's what number two is, so...
We had alternatives in that. What were the alternatives?
Those were the additional spots, so I think they were trying to figure out cost so you can go back and verify like how much. So the little areas above the gymnasiums, or the stairwells in the gym, have separate roof pieces on that, so those alternates were the different parts of the building. So if for some reason something came back totally out of whack, we could just pick the different areas of the building that we wanted to complete.
We're doing the whole project.
We're going to do the whole thing. After this, the roof will be done, the envelope will be sealed. I mean, we will still have the window issues that we need to take care of, but as far as the top part of the building, we will have it sealed up good and tight.
What was the situation with the lady who brought the bid in? She withdrew it?
So, well, she put in a bid for the different, three different buildings. So it was A, B, and C, so the three different buildings. And then when she added up the total, she didn't add it up correctly, and so the full bid to take all three buildings was significantly less than what the individual buildings were. And at that point, you can't change what your bid is, and so therefore, she withdrew her bid. Otherwise, we would have gotten them to do the work at a really low price, but it's probably better off that we did not. After checking some references on that particular group, it was better for us to take a different option anyways.
Are there any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the attached bids?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Hiddle, call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I have nothing on hearing of the public for nonadjunct items. Just a reminder that our next meeting will be May 23rd at 6:00 PM here in the board office. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We've got lots of motions to adjourn. Have seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.